Welcome to our November ninth, the 2020 Electronic Meeting of the City Council. We are meeting electronically due to COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic in accordance with the Governor's and Senator's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. Please note that in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. Instructions are provided on our agenda on the City Council's website at conquerednh.ledstar.com/calendar-aspx. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the City Council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting, and the public has access to listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through clicking on the following website address. If any member of the public does not have a website access, they may dial the telephone number 1-929-205-6099. If dialing from a landline, you may call in toll-free at 877-853-5257. The webinar ID is number 81945617946. For those who want to provide public testimony at the public hearing portion of the meeting, and you are connected to the Zoom website, you may click on the hand, raise hand icon at the attendee section to make the request. When it is time appropriate, you'll be recognized by me and you can provide your testimony. If members of the public are participating on the phone, you may dial *9 to alert that you, me, that you wish to testify. We will not be using the chat function in the Zoom for this meeting. Please note that testimony is only allowed for agenda items that haven't been scheduled for a public hearing. Public participation, public participation is not authorized for any other items on the agenda. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-230-3718, or send an email to citycouncilmeeting@conquerndh.gov. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When you state your presence at the meeting, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required on the right to know law. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Present, home alone.
Mayor Boule.
Present in my office alone.
Counselor Champlin.
I'm present in a room in my house alone, and Susan Champlin and Madeline Champlin are also in the house.
Counselor Fantasy.
I am present, I'm in a room in my home by myself.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Hi, I'm present, I am at home, and my family is also here.
Counselor Hatfield.
I'm here at home alone in a room.
Counselor Keach.
He'll be with us momentarily.
Counselor Kennison.
Here at home alone.
Counselor Kretovic.
She's excused.
Counselor Matson.
I'm home alone.
Counselor Nian. Counselor Nian.
Yes, I am present at home and alone.
Counselor Pierce.
Present, I am home alone in this room.
Counselor Rice-Hawkins.
She is excused.
Counselor Todd.
Here at home alone in this room.
And Counselor Warner.
I'm here alone in this room at my home.
Great, well, it's good to see everybody, welcome. Before we start, recognize Counselor Pierce for motion.
I move that we seal the minutes from the non-public session.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach is still not here, or Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Thank you very much. At this time, if you could all unmute and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands.
One nation. Under God.
God.
Divisible.
Divisible. Liberty. And justice.
Just for all.
Thank you very much. We, you all should have received the minutes for October 13th, 2020. Did you all receive those today? Can we get a motion on those?
Move approval.
Approval, second.
Okay, thank you very much. We have motion to approve the minutes for October 13th, 2020. Anybody have any changes, suggestions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Great, and with that, motion is approved. That takes us to our consent agenda this evening. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is made, and seconded to approve the consent agenda. I will simply note that item 17 has been removed from the consent agenda. And did I miss any others? Did anybody else remove anything? I apologize if I missed. Okay, so a motion is made to approve the consent agenda without item 17. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And with that, the consent agenda is adopted. Takes us to our public hearings this evening. Madam Clerk, item 26A, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1, Stopping Standing in Parking, Section 18-1-7.1A. Parking prohibited during certain hours and months in designated places concerning a section of Beacon Street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, Michelle McCord of Beacon Street contacted Counselor Hatfield concerning winter parking issues. Specifically, Ms. McCord requested that City Council enact an ordinance to establish winter parking ban along the frontage of 1 through 3 Beacon Street in order to facilitate sidewalk snow removal. The parking committee reviewed this request, and the parking committee voted unanimously to recommend the approval of this request to the City Council. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anybody has questions for the manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to testify? Have no one in the attendees section wishing to testify? Mr. Manager, is anybody on the phone that wishes to testify?
No, Your Honor.
Is there anyone on the phone? Can you tell that by, by chance? Excuse me? I can't, I can't hear you.
It's right over my shoulder.
The phone?
It's so muted. Nope.
Never mind.
The phone is, the phone is right, is right here.
Right, no, I'm saying to you, is there anyone? Can you tell if there's any attendees on the phone? By looking at the chart or?
We can look at the attendee list and see if anybody comes in on a phone number, yes, and there is no, there is not.
Okay.
Well, somebody can call in. I thought you meant, could somebody can call in privately? I just don't know why. No one's called up privately.
Okay. Thank you, sorry for the confusion. So, seeing no one wishing to testify, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, if you could read item 26B, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 35 Classification and Compensation Plan, Schedule D of Article 35-2, Class specification index, safety and training coordinator.
Mr. Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, currently, the safety and training coordinator position is classified to labor grade 16 in Schedule D. The proposal is to move it to a level 18 based on the altering landscape of the human services, excuse me, Human Resources Department, and a properly compensated position for the work, the, the work requirements. The need for enhanced safety, loss, and training coordination has become more apparent with the COVID epidemic, as well as a relevant, important push for diversity and inclusion in the workforce. The current position is, is too narrowly focused on data entry, leave administration, and safety incident reporting. That's not what the, the job is doing. That's what's specified in the, in the description, but they have to expand it. All these administrative tasks are essential. Must be performed by the position, has become more proactive in training and safety. Position is critical to the organization's success and should reflect accurately in the, in the relation to the classification and compensation. The position also provides training for all employees with respect to management skills, business skills, and technical skills. Position is charged with ensuring the safety measures highlighted in the Governor's Universal Guidelines that were adhered to once we reopened City Hall to the public. For these reasons, we request the City Council to approve the labor grade change. There's no impact on the, on the budget in terms of any change needed for additional funding. We'll make everything work within existing budgets. Glad to answer your question.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the manager?
Your Honor, I have one question, if I might.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. A question, is the, do I understand this correctly? That the person who is currently in the position will be staying and will, will be upgraded? Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and do you feel comfortable that the person has the training they need? And/or do we have the resources to provide them with any additional training needed to meet these additional duties?
She, she has, the, the person has the, the training in place and is very diligent about receiving that training and as is, as is her director. And, but we would provide any additional training that if, if something does change or modify, we would provide that training. We, we see that as valuable, and I would make the resources available to do that.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Champlin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Espell, I guess I have one brief question. Looking at the job description that you provided, are, are you confident that one person can handle all of these responsibilities?
The, it's, it's quite a talented group up there, but it's small. There, there are really only four people there. We're trying to augment that with some technology changes coming up. But it's really a, if you think about it, part of it's a coordinated position for training. So it is really working with a lot, because there's so many different types of training that takes place, because we have so many different job centers. It's really working with those folks to make sure that all that training takes place and all the different safety issues, if you can imagine, between, between tree removal and police departments and fire department. It's, it's a very varied job. And the person who does it does an excellent job with it. So I, I'm confident for now, but I wouldn't be surprised in future years that we, we're going to have to augment it in the department. And we do use a lot of influence to, to help out.
Okay, terrific. Thank, thank you for that answer. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you. See no further hands? Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify? See no attendees with their hand up?
We have no calls.
Okay, well, then, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll open, Madam Clerk, item 26C, please.
It's a resolution amending Resolution Number 9266, which granted RSA 79E community revitalization tax relief incentive benefits to real estate located at 10 Pleasant Street Extension.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager.
So, the, under RSA 79E, the, the community revitalization tax relief incentives, the pandemic has had a significant impact, negative impact on, at a, at a local level and other levels. These negative impacts delayed the project that was going to take place here, require certain modifications to the purchase and sales agreement between the parties. Proposed changes to the purchase and sales agreement and associated project schedule have implications for the 79E approval, which you previously have given. So I'll go over those briefly. And you have them in writing. Revision specifically impacting the city's RSA 79E approval as follows. DuPree acquisitions LLC, for LLC, shall no longer be responsible for the renovating of the property. Rather WB4 LLC shall acquire the property in its, where, where is, as is conditioned, then renovate the property itself. So Mr. DuPree's company was going to renovate the property and then turn it over and sell it. This, this, in this case, the company is going to renovate it themselves. W4, WB4 LLC shall then lease the property to Will Cox and Barton. As you know, a company we've been trying to attract to the city as previously planned is anticipated that the real estate closing between the parties will occur in November of this year. Second part of this is the delay of the project. Therefore, it's anticipated that the project will not be completed until August of 2021. Yeah, I'm sorry, that was what it was originally going to be completed. Now, it's going to be April 1st of 2022. That's when the tax relief will now commence on April 1st, 2022. Project will be completed in 2021. With these circumstances, the staff recommends City Council approve the attached resolution. So essentially, it's the same project, same party, just doing different pieces to it. Staff estimates the total property tax savings, again, will be approximately $130,000 to help assist with the project. Would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Counsel Fantasy.
Thank you, just a quick question for the manager. If you could just clarify for the public, what's going to happen in the interim period with respect to taxes on that property?
Every, in the meantime, everything stays the same until, until there's actually changes in 2022. So what happens is, once you, once you approve the 79E, you have to have those approvals in place before the work can actually, before, once the work starts, then it actually qualifies for the savings. It doesn't qualify for the savings until you've actually approved it, approved this. That's why it's important to get this done now, so they can actually start doing work on, on the site.
Okay. Counsel Hatfield.
Thank you. There's a sentence on page, toward the top of page two that says, "In addition, this revision has implications concerning which party shall be responsible for providing a protective covenant to the city." Can you just explain what, what that means? Is, is it because the renovations are now going to be done by the purchaser rather than, or, I just wasn't clear on that?
That, that's exactly correct. So, so they'll have to provide us with the covenants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else. This time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify? No attendees? Anyone on the phone?
No, sir.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind reading 26D, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $24,575 to support projects that enhance the special character and vitality of Concord in accepting the sum of $24,575 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation for this purpose.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager.
I have nothing to add, Your Honor. This is an annual amount that we receive. It changes from year to year a little bit, but this is the same, essentially, that you approved last year.
Thank you. We have questioned Counsel Hatfield.
Thank you. And I'm fully in support of, of us accepting this. I just had a question for the manager. Is there anywhere that, where you report to us and to the community how you decide to use the funds?
The, in, in the past, what we have used the funds for, I've asked the Charitable Foundation if they would like to receive a report from the City Council. They said, no, they can actually see the funds in, in effect, because they're right here. And when, when I do have conversations with them, I explain what we're going to do. In particular, these funds, because you have funded doing landscape, the idea was doing landscape improvements around City Hall and improvements to the, to walkability. And then you, we've had to, I've come to you and had to defund those to, to help offset budget costs or reductions or other expenditures in other places. The idea would be to use these funds for that purpose, to actually clean up the landscaping that you have asked me to do in the past that we've been appropriating the funds for, but then had to remove the funds for. So that would be considered a community benefit.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing that, well, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to testify on the side? Seeing no attendees with their hands? Anyone on the phone? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, item 26E, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $17,450 as a transfer to the Equipment Reserve in accepting the sum of $17,450 from insurance companies as payment to settle claims for damage done to city property.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Your honor, members of the council, the insurance reimbursements have been held in the city's suspense account since receipt. A deposit of the funds to the city's Equipment Reserve will allow for the programming as part of the city's annual as part of the city's annual capital improvement, uh, program funding to, to take place. Glad to answer any questions.
Who has questions to the man? Seeing no one, we'll open the public hearing this time. And no attendees with their hand raised? Is there anyone on the phone?
No, sir.
No one on the phone, no attendees. At that time, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, we are on item. Where are we?
Twenty-six F.
There you go. Too many pieces of paper for me. Twenty-six F.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of a hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to continue funding the mobile integrated healthcare program, enhancing the city's ability to respond to emergencies involving opioid overdoses, accepting the terms of the First Responder Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act Grant, and accepting the sum of a hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars in grant funding.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Manager.
Your honor, members of the council, this is the next phase of that program. So the program director, as you know, has already been hired. Uh, previously, the public education efforts are already underway, um, including responder training, community outreach and data analysis to assess, uh, a program performance that is performing quite well. As, as you get reports on during, uh, annually, when you, when we talk about this budget time.
Thank you. Um, any questions for the manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Seeing no attendees, their hand raised? Is there anyone on the phone? Okay, at this time we'll close the public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, item twenty-six G, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of a hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for the procurement of emergency operations center equipment, accepting the terms of an emergency management performance grant and accepting the sum of a hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars in the New Hampshire Department of Safety Emergency Management Performance Grant Funding.
Thank you. And any questions for the, or Mr. Manager, sorry?
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
About questions, would you like to answer any questions? Not seeing, might not see any questions. So this time we'll open the public hearing. Is there any attendees? Don't see any attendees, their hand raised? Anyone on the phone?
No, sir.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, item twenty-six H, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to supplement existing funding for the twenty-twenty pump station, number four relocation and replacement sub-project. CIP number eighty-eight, authorizing the use of water investment fee reserve funds in the sum of three hundred thousand dollars and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Your members of the council, the water, uh, treatment plant has been working on replacing pump station four, which provides all the finished water to the city, essentially charges the system, the distribution system. Existing building constructed in nineteen forties has been identified for relocation and replacement. The council approved four point two million dollars in funding in fiscal year twenty twenty to replace the building with a new building, providing more efficient equipment as well as provide, uh, pumping redundancy that the current station does not have. The engineer's estimate has increased from four, had increased from four point two million to five million due to the qualified contractor's ability to hire skilled labor and the availability of materials needed to construct the new station. After the project bid was opened on September first, anticipated cost of the project is now four point eight two five million dollars, which includes, uh, project construction, engineering, uh, construction management and contingency funding. The current pump station is located in the zone one flood impact area of Pennacook Lake High Hazard Dam. The dam were, failed, existing station would be adversely impacted by the flood wave and the city would lose, um, drinking water supply and fire protection services throughout the entire city until emergency pumping facilities were restored after the event. The new pump station will be constructed out of the flood zone and eliminate this risk. The new pump station will address these risks, provide improved system resiliency, enhanced operational readiness and reduced energy consumption. The funding source, as the city clerk mentioned, is of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in additional funding would come from general obligation, bonds and the water investment fee reserve. Glad to answer any questions.
Very much. Who has questions for the manager? Uh, Counsel Fantasy?
Just a question for, Mr. Manager. When do you expect work to commence, assuming we, uh, appropriate this additional funding for the work?
Why don't we have, um, why don't I have the water supervisor come on board and, um, speak to that? I will pull him in. I'm not able to. So actually, um, what's happened is, uh, Brian LeBron's system has gone down acting as the host. So I can see his hand in. Jess, would you, Jess, I think you've been, um, because Brian got bumped out, I think you are now the host. Could you move Marco in?
Do I just give him allowed to talk? Is that what you do?
Yes.
Done.
Marco, you're on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you. Great question. Uh, timeframe for the project, uh, once we initiate the notice to proceed, uh, which could be obviously anytime after funds are appropriated. Um, we're looking at a four hundred and fifty day construction schedule. Uh, construction would start March of twenty-one. So we just got to get through the winters. There's a lot of concrete work in the Clearwell. So that would start, uh, March one, depending on the weather.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? All right, well, that, that's, take care of that. Uh, seeing no further questions, this time we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify? I see no attendees. Mr. Manager, do you have any calls?
No calls, yes, sir.
Okay, then at this time we'll close the public hearing. Takes us to our action phase. Uh, Madam Clerk, item twenty-seven, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter eighteen Parking, Article eighteen dash one Stopping Standing in Parking, Section eighteen dash one dash seven, one A. Parking prohibited during certain hours and months in designated places concerning a section of Beacon Street.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion? Counsel Hapfield? Yeah, Counsel Hapfield moves approval, seconded by Counsel Chaplin. And, um, Counsel Hapfield, what was yours?
Thank you. Um, I'd first like to thank Counselor Bouchard, um, because she is really the person who brought this forward. Um, after being contacted by the constituent and she also organized a site visit that several of us attended. And I think that this really makes sense, um, for safety and for access to the sidewalk. And it also is right where Beacon, um, intersects with North State. So it's right kind of leading up to a, a stop sign as well. So I think, um, and all the tenants and owners in the building support it. Um, and there seems to be ample parking in the area. So, um, thank you all for your work on this and I think it makes sense.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll just simply note for the record in minutes that there was not, uh, a quorum at that, uh, site visit. It was, um, it was not a public meeting. Uh, seeing no one else, uh, we're ready for the question. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Yes, Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hapfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennison?
Yes.
Counsel Mattson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyan?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
And the motion is adopted. Uh, Madam Clerk, item twenty-eight, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title V Administrative Code, Chapter thirty-five Classification and Compensation Plan, Schedule D of Article thirty-five dash two Class specification index, safety and training coordinator.
We have motion.
Move approval.
Approval, I can't.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hapfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennison?
Yes.
Counsel Mattson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyan?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
That, the motion is adopted. Uh, Madam Clerk, item twenty-nine, please.
It's a resolution amending resolution number nine two six six, which granted RSA seventy-nine E. Community revitalization tax relief incentive benefits to real estate located at ten Pleasant Street Extension.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hapfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennison?
Yes.
Counsel Mattson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyan?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
With that, the motion is adopted. Uh, Madam Clerk, item thirty, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars to support projects that enhance the special character and vitality of Concord and accepting the sum of twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation for this purpose.
Approval.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you very much. Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? None, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hapfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennison?
Yes.
Counsel Mattson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyan?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
Motion is adopted, have received a necessary two-thirds. It's approved. Uh, Madam Clerk, item thirty-one, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars as a transfer to the equipment reserve and accepting the sum of seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars from insurance companies as payment to settle city claim, claims done to city property.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hapfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennison?
Yes.
Counsel Mattson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyan?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
Have received a necessary two-thirds. The motion is adopted. Uh, Madam Clerk, item thirty-two, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of a hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to continue funding the mobile integrated healthcare program, enhancing the city's ability to respond to emergencies involving opioid, opioid overdoses, accepting the terms of the First Responder Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act Grant and accepting the sum of a hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars in grant funding.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hapfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennison?
Yes.
Counsel Mattson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyan?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
Have received a necessary two-thirds. The motion is adopted. Uh, item thirty-three, Madam Clerk.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of a hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for the procurement of emergency operations center equipment, accepting the terms of an emergency management performance grant and accepting the sum of a hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars in New Hampshire Department of Safety Emergency Management Performance Grant Funding.
Move approval?
Second.
Second.
Made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hapfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennison?
Yes.
Counsel Mattson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyan?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
With that, the, uh, motion is approved and have received necessary two-thirds. It's adopted. Uh, Madam Clerk, the last one, item thirty-four, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to supplement existing funding for the twenty-twenty pump station, number four relocation and replacement sub-project. CIP number eighty-eight, authorizing the use of water investment fee reserve funds in the sum of three hundred thousand dollars and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Uh, yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hapfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennison?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic? She's not here, so sorry. Counsel Mattson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyan?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins? He's not here either. Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner? If you're in spirit.
Great. Uh, with that, the motion is adopted and received necessary two-thirds. It's approved. Uh, tonight, we have no reports or normal business before us. Uh, we do have one item unfinished business that we shouldn't take it off. Seeing none, we'll move on to comments requests, uh, by the counselors. Anybody have anything they'd like to, uh, to share? Say what? Um, I, I always nerve, I get nervous that I don't, I miss somebody's hand. So if you guys wouldn't mind just clicking the, uh, the raise hand piece, it's so much easier for me. But, uh, let's start with Counsel Hapfield.
Thank you. A question for the city manager. I wondered if he could update us on how the grant program is going, um, that we approved at the last meeting for restaurants to install, um, equipment to deal with COVID.
Mr. Baye will answer that.
So the Economic Development Director is working with the Chamber of Commerce. They have a program that's in place. I believe that there is, the deadline is still not upon us, uh, for that. Uh, but they've, uh, sent out communication to most, if not all, the restaurants in the community. Uh, I want to make it clear it's open. I want to make it clear, it's open to restaurants that are ju- not just chamber members. That was important. And they're prioritizing. Facilities that have some sort of match already. Because that will give them a little bit more of a score in terms of figuring out who will be awarded. There seems to be quite a bit of interest out there from what I understand. So we're hoping that in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a better idea of how much of an impact this will make.
Great, thank you for that update and thanks for all of your work on that.
Counselor Champlin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm sure you're going to comment on the recent election. And I don't want to preempt you on that. I do however, want to. Just say, as I did during the primary election, that it was very gratifying to me. Various polls that I visited. To see what I guess I would call a new generation of old volunteers. A lot of members of our young professional community. Stepped up to the plate and volunteered during this cycle as well. And I think that's very encouraging for the future of the city. I also just want to mention that somebody who has stood out in the cold. Freezing, holding signs for a number of elections. That I'm always impressed with the conviviality. That usually exists. Among people who are holding signs for various candidates at the polls. There is camaraderie. There is a falling of barriers and differences of opinion. That goes hand in hand with sharing the common suffering of freezing to death on a cold election night. And that's one of the warmest things that I will take away. From my experience on these various election nights. That was certainly the case this year. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Pierce.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to reach out and thank our city clerk. For securing the barn at Bull Meadow. I had a few constituents write back to me. They were very pleased with it. Pleased with the venue. I hope the owners were too. There were some people parking on lawns and the like, so. We live and learn, so. I thought it worked out as well as possibly could. If I may, I do have a question for the city manager and asking. How the leaf blower is working? Saw the article in the paper today and is it everything the paper made it sound like it is?
I believe it is. And actually, I've seen some video of it today of neighbors posting from their windows as the. As the combination of the truck and the leaf blower goes by. And while it's as slow as the snow removal goes, it is very efficient. It seems to be working quite well. But we anticipate there'll be ways to improve it as time goes on, and so we're going to keep track of the type of comments we get and the. And the recommendations we get from folks, but everything seems to, that we've seen so far seems to be. Pretty good.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Keach.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to. Commend the clerk and her work she did. At my polling place in Ward six, I encountered a slight confrontation between someone. Who had a political message. Presented, and they were asked to remove it. And clearly, the person at the door was a volunteer. But did such a really good job at deescalating the whole thing and just explaining the rules and. I attribute that to the clerk and the folks that she brought in and recruited to do. Do the important job that they do. So it's, the system worked and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Fantasy.
Just a brief thank you to the city clerk and her staff and echoing Counselor Pierce's comments. I got some very good comments about the change in polling location in Ward two. Also got some positive comments from people in Ward seven that liked the space and the parking available at the Downing School. Even though, of course, everybody misses the chance to go into the West Street warehouse. So thank you to all the volunteers that came out. And thank you for running a great, great election.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
All right, so as Counselor Champlin indicated, I was probably going to mention something and I thought I would just add a few more little items. That might be of interest, but I think that. Madam Clerk, it goes without saying, the whole council of the city is very appreciative, appreciative of all your work. And to put in perspective, I think. When you look at the unknowns that we had from the summer and how this was all going to operationally work. You know, we changed three polling locations here in the city and I think it was very smooth. How it all transitioned. I think it's important to note that we had two hundred and thirty eight elected or temporary ward officials. Who worked at the polls on November third. That is, I think, a wonderful statistic to note because. When people talk about fair elections and such, I like to always note that it's your friends, your neighbors, the people you. You see at the grocery store, those are the folks who are working the polls. And it, I have absolute confidence that. With the sheer number of folks in Concord who work the polls, it's safe and we know each other. In fact, I saw Counselor Hatfield work hard at the polls that day as well. Another thing I think of worthy to note is that there's a ten week period that starts on September fifth. From the primary through the November seventh, twenty twenty three, today. Because the work after the election doesn't stop from the clerk's office. But there are a thousand nine hundred and eighty four hours that were spent by full time hourly temporary employees on election related duties. So when we talk about this at the budget time. You know, sometimes the election, the clerk's office, kind of we move through it fairly quickly. But because we've always had very successful elections. But there's a lot of work that goes into making these things come off the way they do. We did have. Two thousand. Six hundred and sixteen residents in the city Concord actually registered the day of the election, which I thought was worthy of noting. And not, and not only that, but absentee ballots of the. I think what we have, like thirty two percent voted statewide. But of those who voted Concord, we had. Eight thousand nine hundred and seven people, ninety six, eight thousand ninety seven people actually voted absentee ballot. So people did take advantage and that way you can see how, why there were so many hours that were spent preparing for these elections. And I'll leave you with this. I've always wanted to have a competition between the wards to see who could get the highest voter turnout. And the award this year would go to, this particular election would go to Ward five, which had forty two percent. Participate. We had. We had followed up by Ward nine, ten, and Ward seven. So we had a great turnout and I think that the clerk's offices, everybody else is in creative deserves a huge congratulations. And Ms. Bonafont, you in particular. I know you're working weekends, I know you're working nights, and I know you're dragging your family into the clerk's office to work, so. Thank you, Natalie, thank you to you, but to your wonderful husband, Mr. Bob. So, thank you. I have nothing further. Is anybody else have anything else they want? Mr. Manager, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I had a whole piece on the city clerk and actually her husband, but you covered it, so thank you for that. Actually, I'd like to have Mr. LeBrun give a very brief update to you on the LED relamping program that we, as you know, we have going on and where we are with the PUC, so. Mr. LeBrun, would you mind updating?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, Unitil, on behalf of the city, has petitioned the Public Utility Commission. To extend the on build financing loan program. As part of the street light, LED street light program that we're working with them on. The order from the Public Utility Commission did come in and it does grant the request by Unitil. To provide the non-residential energy efficiency loan program to the city of Concord. They did it with condition and the condition is that they have a comment period from now through November twenty third. If there's no objections, then on November twenty third, the order would be in place and we would be able to move forward at that time. So this is very good news. We've been. Working for quite a long time on trying to get an LED program into the city. This will be good because half of the program will be funded as a grant from Unitil and the other half will be on build financing from them. So those are all very good things. I would anticipate that if there's no objections, we would. See posting on the December city council meeting for a public hearing and action in January for the overall approval. Of the funding and the program. And then from there, we would put out the request for proposal, which is just about ready to hit the street. And then we can move forward with that program. We've been working very closely with Beth Greenblatt on this, our energy consultant. And I would, I was going to ask her to be present at the January council meeting so that she can answer any questions regarding this overall program. I'd be glad to answer any questions or if anybody has any comments. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. LeBrun?
Okay. I have a comment.
Please do. Counselor Warner.
Thank you, Your Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Great news. It's terrific for the city in so many ways and I do again want to recognize. Mr. LeBrun for sticking with it for so long and many others in the city that have been, that have been helpful to this program, but it's going to be a real benefit to. The citizens of Concord and very visible progress as well, so. Looking forward to this. City council meeting in January and the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Matson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. LeBrun, do you have, I think there are savings that are associated with this program as well? You have any numbers you could throw out to the public?
I do have, I do have that information. I will actually include it in the December report. I don't have it right in front of me. But they will be saving over a, over a ten year period that will be very good. And the payback is a five year period. And I just don't remember the numbers right off the top of my head, but that will all be included in the report in December.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Appreciate the update. For this time, we have.
Can I, can I keep going?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I had, I had one more. That was just one item. I had another item, which was as. Concord School District voted to. With conditions that we work out a deal with the. Abbott Downing Historical Society for the Concord Stables property. There'd be conditions that we would put on and to make sure that we can work out that deal and if we can. For that property to be transferred to the city of Concord for renovations, then I would bring that before you or the next available council meeting. So we'll be working on that, just so, I just wanted to make sure the community was aware that that's a potential project that could happen that would help. Abbott Downing Historical Society for the preservation of the Concord coaches. And to also preserve that building, working concert with the Concord School District. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions about that update? Okay, look forward to the report. Madam Clerk, we had one item removed from consent.
Yes, it's item seventeen, it was removed from the consent agenda by Mayor Boule. It's a report from the deputy city manager for development. Recommending authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement. With Hippo Press LLC to regulate the placement of newspaper dispensing boxes on Main Street.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So I don't want to prolong this. I know the kickoff is right on the corner here, but. I just had a question before we approve this. So there are currently eight different locations where these. Boxes are located right now in the city. Many, several of them are also with the Insider as well as the Weir's Times. And when we originally did the Main Street project, we talked about. Some standards that we wanted to set for how these were going to appear. So that they weren't just randomly placed all over. And so when I reviewed the license agreement, I didn't see a lot of those standards. I mean, I saw. You know, the terms and the purpose and terminations, et cetera, liability issues. Those type of things, but I may have missed it, but I didn't see kind of like, what do we want these to look at? I mean. We spent so much time as a community figuring out what we wanted the benches to look like, what do we wanted the lights to look like? And all the other parts of Main Street. I just wonder. Are there any standards for what we're doing or are these just going to be, once again, just these boxes changed to light poles?
That was my question for you, Mr. Manager. All of this.
Evening again, counsel. So. Relative to the standards, that's a great question. So years ago, as the mayor noted. We had had discussions about creating corrals and having sort of uniform boxes. In fact, we, I believe, the proposal at the time was for us to build boxes. And have the different newspaper companies basically be tenants in those boxes. We moved away from that and the industry has kind of tanked, for lack of a better term. So we've quite lost, lost a lot of that volume of paper, newspapers since that time. There's still some out there, as the mayor noted. The hippo in this particular instance, what they were proposing, they reached out to us. And they basically said, look, we've got, we've got a few boxes out there. They'd like to expand that footprint. They wanted to work with the city. What they're proposing is basically their sort of blue box, which is the most prevalent box that they have out there. The standards that we incorporate into the license agreement are basically focused on cleanliness. Vandalism and upkeep of the boxes and making sure they stay in locations that are designated on the license and don't grow like mushrooms. But we do not have a aesthetic standard for the box and that was not contemplated in discussions with the hippo. But if that's what the council would like us to approach, obviously, we can, we can look to do that.
Well, you know, Liz, I know we have to. I know that there, we have to allow for this to happen. I understand that, but I just, I wanted to flag it to see if anybody else. Had issues with the aesthetic pieces or, for that matter, where these actually are located. I know that we got a list in the report. But if you look now, you've got, you know, on the corner of Pleasant and Main, it's kind of tucked behind the. The post office box, you've got some in front of, on the side of plazas. You've got some in front of bus station. It just, it just seems very random where this all occurs and. I just want to know what anybody else thought before we vote on it.
Okay, oh, we do. Counselor Nian.
Thank you, Your Honor. My recollection is the same as yours. We did have some very robust standards back during the Main Street project and. I, I do think there should be some sort of a standard to make sure that they look proper. So if we need a motion to make that happen, I think we should. And then I'll leave it at that. Yes, we should have standards.
Counselor Champlin.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. My thinking is along the lines of Counselor Nian's, you know, we put an awful lot of money into making. Main Street look attractive. You're right, we spent a lot of time on those benches. On wayfinding and other aspects. And it would seem that this might present an opportunity. To adopt some modest standards so that the dispenser boxes for the newspapers. Look consistent. I also would just say, look consistent with the look we're trying to get on Main Street. Which also, by the way, has our public sculptures as well. I do though want to say that it's great to see print publications still viable. The hippo has a great history as a weekly. And I would love to also just see and make sure that, that we continue to cooperate with them. And or, in the context of making the papers available to our residents and visitors on Main Street. Thank you, Your Honor. And I will second Counselor Nian's motion.
Thank you. Counselor Fantasy.
I'm going to disagree because frankly, I don't think you're going to have to worry about newspaper boxes very long on Main Street. So I'm comfortable moving ahead.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Brady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I hope that we will continue to have newspapers and newspapers on Main Street and throughout the state. That said, what would the process look like for trying to standard? to standardize where these boxes are? What, like, would that be, how would that be done, Mr. Mayor?
Great question. I honestly don't know the answer. I literally, when I read this, I just, I had more questions than answers. I don't, I'm not going to pretend to have the answers of where exactly they should be, what exactly they should look like. I just thought it was worthwhile to have a conversation to council level, because, you know, depending on where these pop up and what they look like, we're the ones who are going to hear about it. So I think we at least ought to be ready for an answer. So I apologize if I'm giving you a better answer. I just don't have one. I... Counselor Hatfield.
Yes, I don't, I haven't seen any problem with these, and I think they are an important community resource. So I don't object to having a further conversation, doing some further work. But I just would hope that there isn't a gap in access. I'm hopeful that if we do move forward with developing standards or looking at this more closely, that the papers would still be able to be out. Is that, would that be a safe assumption?
I can only speak for myself. I mean, I have no desire to not have them out there. That was not my, I'm not looking to stop anything or prevent them from being there. I just wanted to make sure we were all comfortable with what they, where they were and what they were going to look like. That's all.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't like a current license expiring or anything like that. Thank you.
Mr. Baye, the ones that are out there, had we approved those in the past, or did they just show up?
So there are, there are hippo boxes, not just on Main Street, there are hippo boxes probably throughout various parts of the city. There on Main Street, roughly in the section of where we renovated, so from Theater Street to Center Street, there are six existing boxes that are on public property. There is no license for those boxes, just like historically, as far as I know, there's never been a license for newspaper boxes. They just sort of appear, and they've grown, and they've gone away, et cetera. So in this instance, again, just to reiterate, this was something that the hippo itself approached us on, because they did want to expand, but they were conscious of the fact the city was very protective of its renovated Main Street, and they wanted to, in essence, kind of do the right thing, for lack of a better term.
I'll just simply, Counselor Pierce, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Do we have license agreements with UPS and FedEx and, you know, those boxes that are on the sidewalk? Yes.
Okay, so we, Counselor, we have, we do have license agreements with UPS and FedEx, wherever they have, if they have a box on public property, a right-of-way. We do not have license agreements with the United States Postal Service, though, for example, and they're out there as well. So that's just another entity you might see on Main Street.
I just have one last question. So I appreciate the hippo coming forth. I very much appreciate them, and considering what we have tried to do. But we also have boxes for The Weir's Times and for The Insider. Is there any effort to reach out to them to see where they want to be, or is the hippo going to be treated one way and others can just follow suit, or how does, how do you envision that working?
So we have, we haven't yet reached out to any other newspaper publication at this point. I think, wanted to gauge the council's appetite was for doing a license with the hippo, and from that point, getting some direction this evening, that's something we could do. And in terms of, again, the standards for the newspaper, that's something I think we'd want to talk about, because, again, just like the mayor, I really don't have an idea of myself of how to tackle that at the moment. Maybe the manager has some thoughts on it.
Good night, Mr. Manager.
I think, I think in this case, what would make sense, because they reached out to us, it would make sense to grant a temporary license and have staff work with the planning board to look back at the standards of the design of Main Street, come up with something that's reasonable, that can be reasonably constructed at a reasonable price, and then say, "This is what we're going to be using throughout the, throughout downtown," so to speak, if we're just focused purely on downtown at this point. And that's the standard, and then we could let the other users know, "This is the standard that we're going to be using. If you want to be downtown, this is what you're going to use." What I'd like to do is make sure our legal department is looking at this, too, because what we don't want to do is get into a situation where we're being accused of infringing upon somebody's First Amendment rights. So by doing this, and that's some of the discussion you remember in the past, when we talked about how to go about doing this. So, and then we decided not to do the corrals. So I think as long as we provide the opportunity, then I think everybody's rights are protected.
Thank you. So I'm comfortable moving forward and granting a license. I guess at the end of the day, I'd hope that everyone's treated the same for the other boxes that are out there, and lastly, that we do it in a way that doesn't create a lot of clutter to, I think, Main Street, that there are lots of people, like, an effort into making it look as good as it does, so. I'll confess, I don't remember if we have, I remember somebody making a motion, but I don't know what it is. I apologize.
Your Honor, this is Counselor Nighan. Basically, I had suggested that if we needed a motion to move forward, having some standardized, having some standards, that I would do so. Counselor Champlin actually seconded the motion, which I don't think was quite a motion. So I think we're at a place where, I guess frankly, if it was considered a motion, then, and it was duly seconded, then I guess that's where we're at. I'm a little confused myself.
I guess, I guess I'd look for a motion to accept the report or authorize the manager to enter into license agreement.
So moved. I can't...
Motion made and seconded. And just before, I would like to add, from my own personal perspective, that, that as we do this, that we work with others as they come forth to make sure that we don't create a situation that we'll regret later on, but giving everybody access. That's my personal opinion, so. But we do have a motion before us to authorize this. Is there anyone else who would like to share anything? Any other comments?
Your Honor, I'll just say, this is Jim Kennedy, the city attorney. With this license, with all of our licenses, we have a termination clause here. So to the extent that the council comes up with some new ideas as to how they'd like these boxes to look on Main Street, certainly viable under the existing proposed license that we have here, and I think it would be workable for hippo, and certainly for any other vendors that seek to have space on Main Street. And so this is a term license, sort of years, but certainly it has a termination clause with a 30-day, anytime for any reason that the city would wish to move on that. So if we get some direction moving forward as to how we would like these to appear visually or aesthetically on Main Street, I think there's plenty of room for that in this existing license.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So we have a motion, motion and seconded. Ready for the question. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Finacy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nighan.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes. And having motions adopted. Madam Clerk, did I miss anything, or has that completed our agenda?
That does complete your agenda.
Right, well, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything last minute, for the good of the cause? Seeing none, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
To adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Finacy.
C.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nighan.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes. Wonderful. Motion's adopted. We are adjourned. Wonderful to see everybody. Have a safe week and enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
They say...
Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.